Call the adjourned meeting of Paramount City Council to order. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Guian. Councilmember Lemmons.
Here.
Councilmember Omos.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer.
Here.
Mayor Hanson.
Here. City Council Public Comment Updates.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We have two from the October 1st meeting. The first resident that spoke that we are reporting back to you was Ms. Desiree Taylor. And she had various issues that she expressed concern with the council such as large item pickup, access on to Downey Avenue from her condominium complex, parking, and anti-smoking ordinance, and free pure air fires. The response by staff is many of the concerns were addressed in a letter that was sent to Ms. Taylor last month. And we will continue to work with her as well as the HOA Association to resolve some of her issues as best as our abilities, as the best to our abilities, excuse me. The second person that spoke that we're reporting back to was Ms. Dina Taylor and Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Dina Turner. Ms. Turner requested help with congestion at the intersection of Downey Avenue and Second Street because in the mornings she mentioned that cars were backing up from the stoplight at Somerset and Downey. This issue has been resolved. We actually painted the street "Keep Clear" at that intersection and added proper signage, and that was completed last week. So with that, that concludes our report.
Okay. Thank you. Public Comments.
Yes, sir. We do have three cards today. The first one is from Ms. Desiree Taylor, and she'd like to speak to the council. Ms. Taylor?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Desiree Taylor, the president of Association Somerset Paramount HOA. First, we want to say thank you guys for putting "Keep Clear" on the pavement of Downey. Dina Turner and Somerset Paramount HOA wants to say thank you. We also would like to know if you guys can also paint our exit on 15,000 Downey Avenue to keep clear too because when the kids go to school, it gets backed up and we cannot get out our driveway. So if you guys can put that in front of our residents, that would help us a lot. Also, last time, I know I only have 180 seconds, and I cover a whole bunch of ground with that 180 seconds. So let me just emphasize about no smoking ordinance. I didn't realize that vaping is different from smoking. So if you guys decide to do no smoking, we also need to put no vaping in there. I'm not talking about for my residents at Somerset Paramount because we have a rule there's no smoking on common grounds, common areas. So I'm just talking about for the rest of the residents of the city of Paramount, just thinking about their life and their health and their safety. That would be greatly appreciated. And so I just have one more, it's not, I'm not accusing anyone, but it's a question I had for the people that's in front of me. October the 11th approximately 7:33 a.m., someone who's claiming to be from the city of Paramount entered our residence, and they bypassed our security. They didn't go through the entrance gate because the entrance gate was closed, but they went through the exit gate, which could have been a hazard. Our gate could have closed and broken, hit their vehicle, they could have got injured, or their vehicle could have got injured. But this person bypassed our security, and when the security approached them, they stated they was from the city of Paramount. They came on our property and took some pictures. So I was just, I'm not trying to accuse anybody of anything, but I just wanted to ask, you know, everybody that's in front of me, do you guys have any knowledge of this? Did you authorize this? Do you know who this person is? And I have the license plate, but I'm not going to say the whole license plate out loud, but I will give you the three digits. The last three digits is 867, it's a white Jeep Liberty. So that's just my question opposed in front of the council today.
What time of day did you say that was?
7:33 a.m.
7:30 in the morning. Do we know anything about that?
No, we don't, but we can definitely check into that report back to the council. But to my knowledge, we don't own any Jeep, well, I'm sorry, what was the model Jeep?
It was a Jeep Liberty, a white one.
Liberty, yeah. We have Fords, we have hybrid vehicles, but Jeep Liberty does, I'm looking at the department heads if any of them have that type of make and model in their fleet, and I don't think we have that, so.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Okay. Our next speaker, Mr. Mayor, is Ms. Andrea Crowe from the library. She'd like to discuss some library events coming up.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hanson, councilmembers in the city of Paramount. We have some very exciting events coming up at Paramount Library. On Tuesday, October 22nd at 6:30, adults are welcome to join us for an evening of laughter with the April Fool's Improv troupe. It'll be a riot with lots of family-friendly humor and audience participation. On Wednesday, October 23rd at 5:00 p.m., children ages 8 to 17 can learn how the Mayan temples were actually observatories as we watch a film in our full dome digital planetarium. And on Tuesday, October 29th at 4:00 p.m., teens ages 12 to 18 can learn about the Day of the Dead and design their own ceramic calaveras. Learn more about these and other great events at alleycountylibrary.org. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Yolanda Flores, and Ms. Flores is from PGS, from Paramount Girls Softball. She'd like to discuss some issues going on there. Ms. Flores?
Hi. Good evening. I am not a part of PGS now anymore. I was a parent of one of the girls who belonged to the league, and I just kind of wanted to bring up the fact that some of us parents had to, were forced to leave the league due to girls being treated unequal, and so I just kind of wanted to shed light on that if it hasn't already. You do have 12 girls that used to belong to the league of, for the city of Paramount that have left due to various issues that the Recreation Department has been trying to help us with, and they currently go play in Artesia to get some playtime. And when we're at the park, we continuously get kicked out and called by the city staff that we have to move because we're in the way of the current Paramount softball league that is out there practicing. So just wanted to bring that up and see if maybe there's some assistance that can be provided to us additionally, and make sure that the proper person is responsible for this league to provide the best organization for your residents of Paramount.
You've looked into this, I'm assuming?
Yes, I will have Mr. Johnson respond to this.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. We are currently working with Paramount Girls Softball and this group of parents that have left the league to try to find them actually both have space. So the way it works now is a recognized youth sports league will come to us for permits, and basically they'll, they'll get basically all they want for those fields. Traditionally, when these, these youth leagues were very large, when private groups came to us and wanted to use field space, we couldn't grant it because we didn't have room. The current fall structure of Paramount Girls Softball consists of 36 girls. They currently have all five days and Saturday locked up, and some Sundays based on the game schedule. So the department really feels that there is room that both groups can coexist. Yolanda has been in contact with us. She does meet the 75% rule that council established many years ago. They do have insurance because they all came from that league, so they have insurance already in place through December 31st. So we're currently working with Girls Softball to try to create space where they're not on the field at the same time, but they do have private time that they have for Girls Softball, and then this private group would have their own time. So we've requested that information, a practice schedule from Girls Softball. We have not received it yet. So we're in the process of trying to get that and sitting down with them and negotiating their permits down so that they don't have all five days for three and a half hours a day. And that's kind of where we're at.
Okay. Thank you.
What's their deadline, Dave, to give you that information?
We haven't given them a deadline. We've, again, we were going to go through stages, so we've requested it a couple, three times. So now we're going to have to institute a deadline and some consequences for not meeting that deadline.
Okay. Good.
Great. Our last speaker, Mr. Mayor, is Ms. Eleanor Mendoza, and she wanted to give the council a heads up.
Hello. I am Eleanor Mendoza, born in Clearwater, California, 1944. Just here for the heads up, I have a niece, Tina Christina Mendoza, who lived across the alley. They live behind my dad, and she's in need of a kidney transplant. And she lived next, across the alley, like here to there, from Custom Chrome, a chrome shop. So, you know, Peggy's voice rings in my head forever. There's nothing wrong in Paramount. Heads up. Because my family grew up in that corner, and I still, after the lawsuit, I called, asked them if my niece could be on our lawsuit, and they said, no, it's too long. But just that she's very ill. She comes over to my house, and it still knocks me out that they grew up next to that chrome shop. She's very ill. She's got two children. And my second heads up is Brenda. Brenda's mom is my dear, dear friend. But the last time I was here, and you did roll call, and you got to Brenda, Councilwoman Brenda, and it just really, I think until I got home, I was like, do I remember the struggle with Ms. Guian and us running all over Paramount, lady getting bit by the dog, us, you know, outrooting for her. And the matter of fact, no offense, Brenda, because you know, I love you, I love your mom, that just, you just put her there. That's all. And then last, Councilwoman Guian, one more time, with my family, I have a niece who just had this rare disease in her eyes, and she's blind now. She's just a young lady, she's in her 30s, but that she owes my family nothing, Lori really doesn't, but that she did a fundraiser for my niece, and I just wanted to come here and let you know what a kind woman she is. That's all. That's my heads up. Okay?
May I respond?
Sure.
May I respond to that?
Yes.
Mayor?
We normally don't, but okay.
That's fine.
It's fine.
Then I just want to say, yes, I know that Lori did the fundraiser.
Right.
And I was, I supported that fundraiser.
Thank you very much.
And I know Tina so long, but, you know, and the point that, that they just put me here, you've known me for all my life.
Yes, I have.
And to the point where you just put somebody at a position.
Yep.
I understand the frame on that, but again, I wasn't born yesterday, and you know that the fact that I love this city, and I would do anything to serve this city.
Right.
So for me to sit up here is an honor and a privilege for me.
Yes.
And I hope that your family supports me on March 3rd, and then we'll see.
Okay. Thank you.
Hope so, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No more?
No more, sir.
Okay. New business, item number three, introduction, Mr. Jose Martinez, new Paramount Postmaster.
Oh, we do have a consent calendar, this way?
Oh, I'm jumping ahead. Yeah. Consent calendar, sorry.
Move it a second already.
Good. Been moved by Hoffmeyer, second by Lemmons to approve the consent calendar. Grab a roll call, please.
Councilmember Guian.
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons.
Yes.
Councilmember Omos.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Hanson.
Yes. Now introduction of Mr. Martinez.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council. Our parent, new Paramount Postmaster actually reached out to the Chamber of Commerce and to the city, to the express their willingness to improve services at the Paramount Post Office. So recently, staff met with him, and he asked to come and introduce himself to the city council and say a few words. So with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jose Martinez, and you're welcome to come up and address the council.
Okay. It's a pleasure to meet everybody and being here, and I know I spoke to Kevin, I spoke to Adriana, and I was, you know, get some information concerning the parking there at the post office, and we're working together to improve the, our post office. There's, I know they haven't had a postmaster in a while, and I'm just happy to be there and to improve as much as I can, and to provide excellent service, you know, from the postal service. If there's anything else I could do, reach out to any city council member. You're always welcome to, to reach out to me, email me, or phone call, and I'll be the, I'll do the very best to help out whatever situation we might, you know, we might be having. But again, thank you for inviting me and being here and introduce myself to you. So thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to Paramount and the post office.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Okay. Item number four, resolution number 19.040, application for and receipt of Senate Bill Two Planning Grants Program Funds. Just staff report, please.
Yes, you may, Mr. Mayor. We are eligible to receive grant funds from the state for planning purposes. We'd like to do a total redo of the Clearwater East specific plan. This is the area that mostly is occupied by SWAT meat. You may think this sounds familiar, and it does. We recently came before you in May to amend this specific plan. So here's John Carver to tell us about the grant, and also to tell us what's the difference between the action you took in May and what we like to do with this grant. So with that, I'll turn it over to our planning director, Mr. John Carver. John?
Thank you, John. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I have a presentation. So as John mentioned, this item is a request to apply for a Senate Bill Two planning grant. Senate Bill Two was signed by Governor Brown in September of 2017, and the Senate Bill established a $75 recording fee on real estate transactions. These funds are intended to increase the supply of affordable housing with 50% of the SB Two funds going to local governments to update planning documents. This year, the State Department of Housing and Community Development issued a notice of availability for SB Two funds. The funds can be used to update general plans, community plans, and specific plans, and we would like to use the funds to update the Clearwater East specific plan. The Clearwater East specific plan was adopted by the city council in 1987, and as John mentioned, most recently in May of this year, the city council amended the specific plan. That amendment allowed for housing and established development standards for housing. In April of this year, you also looked at the Paramount South Gate Station Area Plan, and this conceptual plan was prepared in connection with the West Santa Ana Branch Light Rail Project, and it envisions housing, retail, restaurants, and open space. The money that we'd like to use the grant funds on, that we would like to use the grant funds on amending the Clearwater East specific plan, and this would provide significantly more detail than the conceptual station area plan provided, and it would detail where housing, retail, restaurants, and open space would be located. And that goes beyond what you did when you amended it. That amendment just allowed for housing and then established development standards. The plan itself will go significantly beyond that with the grants funds, and as I mentioned, will lay out specific details on where things will be located, density of housing, location of open space, restaurants, retail, office. And this is the conceptual station area plan. Just to refresh your memory, there is a significant amount of open space that is proposed in the plan along the eastern side of the site. There's retail that's adjacent to Paramount Boulevard, and varying degrees of, varying densities of housing throughout the site. And with that, we're recommending that you adopt Resolution 19040, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Questions?
I'll move the items.
Move the item.
Second.
Moved by Hoffmeyer, second by Lemmons, read by title only, adopt Resolution Number 19.040. Grab a roll call, please.
Councilmember Guian.
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons.
Yes.
Councilmember Omos.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Hanson.
Yes. Item number five, amendment to promissory note for 8421 Adams Street. Staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. In 2012, we used HUD funds to partner with a local developer to build a senior housing complex on Adams Street. As part of this deal, the developer needed to do an audit. It's been some time now, and the audits have been successful. As a result, HUD Guidelines allows for transition from an audit to a comprehensive type of document review. So with that, I'll turn it over once again to our planning director, John Carver, who will give you more information on this. John?
Thank you, John. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this item is a request to amend a promissory note for the senior housing project that's located at 8421 Adams Street. The city gave a loan of $948,500 to the developer from our federal home funds. The senior housing complex has 35 units, nine of which must remain affordable for 20 years. Here's a look at the project. The amendment would convert a yearly audit to an alternative reporting procedure. MDG Associates, the city's home fund consultant, has determined that an alternative review can be done and still meet federal home guidelines. The alternative review would include financial statements, residual receipts, and reserve balances, and the city attorney has approved the amended promissory note, and we're recommending that you do approve the amendment, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And also Esther Luis from MDG Associates is here if there are any questions I can't answer. Thank you.
Questions? None?
Move the item.
Second.
Moved by Lemmons, second by Hoffmeyer to approve the amendment of promissory note for the senior housing project at 8421 Adams Street. Grab a roll call, please.
Councilmember Guian.
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons.
Yes.
Councilmember Omos.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Hanson.
Yes. Item number six, resolution number 19.039, adopting Chapter 10 of Caltrans Local Assistance Procedures Manual for Consultant Selection. Staff report.
Yes, sir. Our Public Works Director, Adriana Figueroa, will handle this item. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the city receives through a competitive bid process federal and state funds for the design and construction of transportation-related projects. The federal government has delegated to Caltrans the authority to administer the use of these funds by local agencies through their local assistance program. Caltrans recently updated Chapter 10 of their local assistance procedural manual, also known as the LAPM, and in order to continue to be eligible for the reimbursement of funds used for consulting services on federal projects, Caltrans requires that the city adopt these policies and procedures outlined in Chapter 10 pertaining particularly to the selection of architectural and engineering consultants. This newly revised chapter includes items such as the completion and submittal of additional documentation in order to verify that any request for proposal has clearly identified the need for consultant services. Other items include documentation that a clearly defined scope of work has been prepared, and that an independent analysis has been performed in estimating the cost of the project and the required services. Therefore, in order to continue to position ourselves for federal transportation funding, staff is recommending city council read by title only and adopt Resolution Number 19039. That concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Take more receiving file.
Second.
Been moved by Hoffmeyer, second by Lemmons, to read by title only, adopt Resolution Number 19.039. Grab a roll call, please.
Councilmember Guian.
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons.
Yes.
Councilmember Omos.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Hanson.
Yes. Item number seven, a report on ongoing crime prevention efforts.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council. As you know, the city council proclaimed it Crime Prevention Month in Paramount at the last council meeting, and as a result, we thought we'd give you a rundown of our ongoing crime prevention efforts since it's very timely. And we'll also be giving you a review of some of the crime statistics for this year so far. Crime statistics can always be viewed as measurements of how effective our prevention efforts are, as well as how effective patrolling is and our law enforcement presence. So with that, I want to turn it over to Adriana Lopez, our Public Safety Director, but also mention to you that this is going to be a tag team type of presentation. Adriana's going to handle the crime prevention and deployment stuff that we've been doing, and then our acting lieutenant, who's in the back, will come up and tell you a little bit about our crime statistics for the year so far. With that, I'll turn it over to Adriana. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Today's presentation, like John mentioned, will highlight the city and the Sheriff's Department's effort to prevent crime in our city. October is the National Crime Prevention Month, and you might recall that our last meeting, the city council presented the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department with the proclamation. And I will discuss what we have done in terms of scheduling specific community engagement efforts in October, and then I will also discuss our ongoing crime prevention efforts. Although we feel that prevention is very hard to measure, we're always trying to make sure that we encourage our residents to be involved in this very important effort. So in October, we had three, or we've already had one event, and we're calling those community engagement efforts because we're trying to provide a different environment where our residents feel comfortable being engaged with our beat deputies. Our Coffee with the Deputy event took place October 3rd, and we had about 40 residents who attended this event. Tomorrow, we will have tacos with the deputy, and hopefully you received your flyer for that. And then in addition, we've been sending tips, safety tips via our social media outlets. What I would like to do at this time is show you our first social media that went out, and we'll start with the event.
All right. Your first tip of the week is going to be vehicle burglaries. None of us want our cars to get broken into, but luckily there are steps we can take to help prevent vehicle burglaries. Tip number one, do not leave anything of value in plain sight in your vehicle. Tip number two, I know it's hot out, but don't leave your windows down. Make sure they're always rolled up. Side note on that, do not leave your pets or kids inside of the car with the windows rolled up if the vehicle is not on. Tip number three, make sure your vehicle is always locked if you're not in it. Yes, that means even if it's parked in your own driveway. All right. That was your safety tip of the week. If you guys have any questions, make sure you swing on by the Paramount substation. Also, stay tuned for next week's tip of the week.
And then our second video.
This week's safety tip is going to be on residential burglaries. No one wants their house broken into, so let's make sure we all pay attention and follow these simple steps to help prevent residential burglaries. Step number one, make sure your windows are closed and locked at all times. Yes, that means even at night. I know it's hot out, but by leaving your windows open and unlocked, it's just allowing burglars to get in easier. Step number two, make sure your front door is closed and locked at all times. Yes, even if you're inside of the house. Step number three, install motion or floodlights on the exterior of your home. The light can greatly deter any unwanted guests. And step number four, if you're out of town, make sure to call Lakewood Sheriff's Station at 562-623-3500, and have law enforcement staff do a safety check on your home while you're out of town.
So that's been some of our specific efforts for October. Some of our ongoing efforts include the following. We have special assignment officers, and you might be familiar with the BEAT map, which is four deputies that are assigned to our city. The fifth special assignment officer is dedicated to our parks. In addition, the deputies conduct parole, probation, and truancy operations on a regular basis, and we also have a dedicated county deputy district attorney who assists us with filings. We also dedicate overtime hours to address crime trends. I really like this effort because anytime that we see that something's going on at a specific time and date, we are able to dedicate these hours to address those trends. In addition, we have dedicated vehicles that assist patrol deputies when our call volumes are high. And then we also have the decoy vehicles. We just had one replaced, so we're happy to report that. And as mentioned, we continue to have community engagement events, our ongoing neighborhood watch meetings, our homeless efforts, we're very proactive with that, and then our Good Neighbor program, which basically educates property owners and managers to properly manage their properties and also include very important clauses on their lease. And the last two years, we've added our Home Security Rebate Program, which has been very successful, and we are firm believers of the window, broken window theory with our cone enforcement division. We feel that they're very proactive, and that also can prevent crime. Our community service officers, we have seven full-time, and they assist by taking reports that deputies otherwise would have to take. By doing so, we allow the deputies to go out and address crimes that are occurring at that moment. And then something that I've noticed is that we're one of the few cities that has very extended station hours every day from 7:30 to 9:00, and that allows our residents to come in and report any crime, or sometimes just even come in and get information on our services. I wanted to bring this up because this is another form of the residents being able to have communication with our deputies. If you go onto our city website, residents are able to email directly their beat deputy, and then I also get CC'd on it, so the lieutenant and I, or acting lieutenant and sergeant, we can talk about it and see what resources need to be done or allocated. At this time, I would like to turn it over to our acting lieutenant. At this time, I would like to turn it over to our acting lieutenant.
Thank you, Adriana. Good evening, Mayor Hanson and council members. Continuing with these, with this presentation, our Uniform Crime Report Statistics, our UCR. As you can see, we've had an overall decrease in crime of seven percent for a total decrease of almost a hundred Part One crimes. And on the next slide, I'll, I'll go into separating each, each type of crime, separating them from property crimes and crimes against persons. As you can see on this slide, on the right, you'll see a percentage change where we've had no change in our homicides. Our rapes, we've had a sixty percent decrease. Assaults, which also include domestic violence incidents, we've had a two percent increase. And our robberies, we've had a fourteen percent increase. A lot of that is attributed to incidents that have occurred at Walmart, where we've had like petty, or you know, thefts that have turned into them trying to get away from their security personnel where force is used to try and escape with the property. And then we've also had some incidents where a crime trend is occurring, not just in Paramount, but throughout Southern California, where there are some thefts that are occurring through social media, like the offer-up sales, where cell phones, tablets, computers are being sold, and the person will steal the item from the person selling it, which is attributing to a lot of these, these crimes. And that's, and that's a crime trend that's happening throughout Southern California, as far as I'm aware. And if you've seen burglaries, we've had a six percent decrease. Overall theft, we've had a nine percent decrease. Auto thefts, we've had fifteen percent decrease. Arson, twenty percent increase, but if you see, it's a, it's an increase of one, most of those attributing to trashcan fires. And where we've had a total decrease of one hundred and one total property crime decrease. Our traffic enforcement, as you're all aware, we've had numerous incidents with our street racers. We've, we've deployed deputies out to the field targeting these, these street racers. And as you, as you see, we've had one fatal traffic collision compared to two thousand and eighteen, where we've had two. These statistics do not, or this one fatal traffic collision does not include the fatality we had with the street racers on Rose grounds. That one does not go into our statistics because that one was handled as a vehicular manslaughter. And I can tell you, I looked into it, and charges were filed for vehicular manslaughter to the other driver last week. We've had a twenty-three percent decrease of traffic collisions with injuries and a fifteen percent decrease of total traffic collisions. DUI abatements, we've had sixty-three arrests made in two thousand and nineteen, year-to-date, compared to thirty-seven arrests made last year. Now, this does not mean that we've had more drunk drivers on, on the streets. We've made some changes. We've added training to our deputies that have made them more aware, they're able to detect lower levels of intoxication. So they're able to get the person who's intoxicated, who may not be necessarily showing that, or showing the symptoms of being drunk, but they're able to determine that they're under the influence of either alcohol, drugs, or a prescription pills. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And if I could just add that these numbers are, it's not a full calendar, it's just up to September.
Right. Questions?
I just have a recommendation, if I, if I could. I think the videos are good, and I think this is, you had mentioned a slogan. It was like, see something, say something. Is there any type of video that you can do that you could say, see something, say something, and then maybe address and let them know how to report it? Because I know sometimes residents get confused on how to report, you know, a parked car that's been out there for five days versus, you know, somebody strolling the neighborhood.
Absolutely. We're going to be doing an additional video for October, so we can make that subject matter.
Anything else?
I have one question. With robberies that have gone up, and then we're right at where we were last year with the homicides, what's the plan, like, to reduce the robbery incident?
Well, right now, we actually have several suspects identified. We're still investigating this, our crimes, as far as some of our, a lot of our robberies is bigger than Paramount by itself. So I can't exactly go into it right now, but it includes other cities.
Okay, because I, I always see that it says our crime is down, and that's great as it pertains to like thefts and thefts from vehicles and things like that. But when we're talking about homicides and rapes and robberies, we keep, we're about the same, or just a little below, or sometimes a little above. And those crimes against persons are the ones that we're really concerned about. And I know you can't get into a lot of the details of like what, you know, what we can do to lower those numbers. But I'm wondering if, you said that you guys are working on it, but I'm wondering if when we address the crime issue, if we can put something out about robberies, you know? Look at your surroundings, Adriana, when we do these videos. Sometimes people are being, are being followed home, so always look in your rearview mirror and those type of things because, you know, home invasion robberies are really scary. And I know we've had a few of those, too.
To, to my knowledge, some of the, or the home invasion robberies that we've had here in the city are known suspects to the victims. As far as some, a lot of the robbery statistics that we have are related to social media, the offer-ups. I'm not familiar with social, social media, but like offer-ups and all those kind of things.
Craigslist.
Yeah. We, we've actually made a, a safe zone at the substation for internet exchanges. We're making these videos that, you know, where consumers can come to Paramount and, and, and do these sales.
So if I could add to that, just to add to that, councilwoman. One of the things that the lieutenant and I were talking about is that these robberies are occurring in our city, but they are, the seller and the buyer are not Paramount residents. They're actually using Paramount as their point of sale. And so we're trying to get that out there even to the people that are not Paramount residents, are not involved in Paramount. It's a little bit more difficult than educating our residents. We have noticed quite a few sales going on in our parking lot of Paramount residents. So that message is getting out to our people, but a lot of the times, I don't know why, but Paramount's being used as a point of sale, and it's difficult to educate the people that don't live here. But we get the stat.
Further questions?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if I can ask, can you kind of describe how it typically happens? The, the buyer and the seller meet, is, are you, you've seen where the, the seller just, or the buyer just grabs it and runs, or is that how that works?
Majority, yeah, the majority of times, a seller will sell, let's just say his iPhone, and they'll decide to meet at an apartment complex that's gated. And, and these locations are specific, not just for Paramount, but it's the same way that's done in other cities. And it's the same group of people. So what they do is they meet in front of this apartment complex, and the buyer, the suspect, will ask to see the, the phone or tablet, computer. And as the item is getting shown to the suspect, the suspect will grab the item and run through a one-way gate and close it behind them, where the victim seller cannot chase behind, behind, behind the suspect. At that point, they're able to run through the apartment complex and get away from the victim. By the time deputies arrive, they've exited through the other, the other side of the, the complex. And these, these crimes are random. There's no set day, there's no set time to where we can, you know, set somebody up, you know, a deputy up to wait for these guys to, for this crime to happen. But even with that, we've, we, we've actually identified a few of them. And we're working with other agencies, other, other police departments, because it's not just a Paramount thing. But that's, that's the most common way that it's happening.
Wouldn't that be grand theft? Unless there's force or fear?
A lot of, a lot of times, a victim tries to pull the item back, and then there's the force.
Further questions? I have one, probably over here, Adriana. I was under the assumption that people requesting like vacation checks, that they could just go direct to our substation to do that? Is that not correct, or they just have to go to Lakewood only?
Actually, it's, the option is both, and that's why we added the Paramount Substation number.
Okay, well, I saw that on there, but it didn't, nobody said that, I didn't think, or maybe I didn't hear it.
No, it wasn't said. It was just the Lakewood number. They can.
And come to, to the Paramount's, the substation to request vacation checks.
Correct.
All right.
And they could also do it online.
Okay, good. I'd like to do it online, too. Good. Okay, any further questions?
Thank you, more receiving file.
Thank you.
Second.
Been moved by Hoffmeyer, second by Omos, the receiving file this report. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Omos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Item number eight, another report, potential sales tax measure. Staff report.
Yes, sir. I'll be handling this item tonight. We'll give that side of the room a little break over there, since they've been handling it. There we go. This is a follow-up to the presentation that we provided to you on August 1st. We got the sense that there were still some outstanding questions and some more information was needed before a recommendation is presented to you to give this item possibly to the voters. So with that, we'll start off with just a recap of what we presented on October 1st to you, and also on September 12th to the group that we assembled. And that is that this is what our commitment is to the community, and that's public safety, well-maintained streets and roads, safe, clean parks, a vibrant local business climate, and services that enhance quality of life. That's again what we're known to be committed to doing. There are recent trends that we've seen, and that's that gang-related crimes have, have dropped dramatically. Unemployment, just like it is throughout the United States, is down significantly here in Paramount. We see, we're seeing higher high school graduation rates and more college attendance. Also, median home values increasing dramatically since 2012. And to, to enhance, to, to, to see that more, we also included, this is part of the poll that was conducted. And in fact, sixty-six of percent of the residents that were polled do believe that we offer a better quality of life here in town than other neighboring cities. If you recall, we also discussed this, and that's our financial concerns. But what I'd like to make very clear here is that this, the, the situation that we're faced with was not unexpected. It was reported publicly in previous, previous staff reports and budgets. And as a result, we took many steps to avoid raising, let's say, the sales tax. And I, I went over those in, in quite a bit of detail at the last council meeting. Things like staff cuts, benefit reductions, innovations. And then we also partnered with other agencies to help provide services. So in addition of, to these expenditure reductions, we also try to raise revenue. For example, in 2015, the voters raised the utility users tax. But this just wasn't enough to combat the rising cost of, for providing services that, to our, our residents and businesses. And of course, we're always trying to attract tax-generating businesses through our economic development efforts. We also aggressively seek grants to supplant funds that are needed for projects. In other words, we wanted to look at raising the sales tax as a last resort. This is something that we wanted to do at the last moment after reviewing everything else that we've done. Speaking of grants, here's, let's see, an example of grants from just one department that we actively seek. So the example before you hear is from our Community Services and Recreation Department. Since two thousand, since the year 2000, the, the department was awarded at least twenty-eight separate non-going grants. And this totaled about forty million dollars. And these were used for multiple park improvements, trails and walking, facility improvements, after-school grants, several multi-year and ongoing, ongoing, excuse me, annual grants. As I said, grants like these really help us to support our building and maintenance and continue with the high quality of life standard that we offer here in Paramount. As we, we mentioned before, we need more revenue to continue providing the same level of service that our community has come to expect. This is the same level of service that has got us to the high quality of life that our residents have gotten used to. And this could include everything from public safety services to street repairs, graffiti removal, neighborhood preservation efforts, and special events. So the revenue source that can best meet a demand for a variety of services is our general fund revenue. This, you, the city council, you have the discretion to determine how the general fund will be spent each year through the budget process. And this can change based on the current needs and trends that we see in the community. If funds, however, are specialized for a certain purpose, there's less flexibility. In other words, you're locked into spending funds in a particular way. And you're less capable of responding to the ebbs and flows as our community grows and evolves and changes. So you want to make sure that you're, you can respond to those. So as a result, we've been discussing a potential sales tax measure, as you know. This would be what's called a general purpose tax, where the money would go into the general fund. As a recap, we will be recommending that the council go to the voters to ask them to increase the sales tax by three-quarters of a percent. This would increase the tax from the current nine and a half percent to ten point two-five percent. The result would be an increase in four, four to six million dollars per year. This would definitely help us to address the budget deficit that's predicted to be with us and grow over the next few years. Most importantly, though, if approved, this extra sales tax revenue would stay local and cannot be taken by Sacramento, or by the county, or another regional agency. So let's talk a little bit more about a general tax versus a special tax. Prop 218, when it was voted in, it added voter approval requirements for all local government taxes, which previously did not exist. So a voter approval was required, as I mentioned. So for a general tax, the revenues to be used can be used for any government purpose. And that's required, the, the requirement for that is a majority vote, which is fifty percent plus one. However, for a special tax, and I'll go into that in a little bit here, those revenues can only be used for a specific purpose. And that would require a supermajority vote of the voters, and that's at sixty-six percent. All right, so let's look at a couple examples. So for a general tax, that is for the city operations as a whole. And this could include things like public safety programs, infrastructure projects, homeless outreach programs, things of that nature. A special tax, however, as I mentioned, would have to be used just for a specific purpose. And an example of that was, say, if you want to build a new sports complex. You have a specific location, you can say ten soccer fields or ten baseball fields. So that's specifically what that would be used for. So that's the difference generally between a special tax and a general tax. You couldn't use that money for anything else but that. So a general tax, then, is what we are recommending that the city council take to the voters. So this would allow flexibility, as I said, for the city council. It allows the city to respond to changing priorities that may occur. It would allow us to respond to emergency situations like earthquakes that, that occur, or anything of that nature. It would allow us to maintain public safety service levels, particularly for the sheriff's department contract as well. We also talked a little bit about how outside agencies, if you recall, could, and in the past, they have a record of taking sales tax out of the city and placing it in a general pool. We wanted to give you some examples of this, just to see it right before your eyes here. We wanted to give you some examples of this, just to see it right before your eyes here. So here we go. So, in 2008, Metro proposed, and it was approved by the voters, Measure R. And that essentially created a half-cent sales tax. Then Measure M came along eight years later, and that was also a half-cent. But what it also did was it made it permanent, it made Measure R permanent, and it, it solidified a one-cent sales tax. So, one cent of what is paid then goes into a general pool, and it's used for transportation purposes. Next, and more recently, was two years ago, when LA County sponsored a, a measure, a sales tax increase for homeless services. And that was a quarter cent. That does go away in March of 2027, unless the county goes back to the voters and wants to seek to make it more permanent. So that could happen as well. Now you all remember this slide. This is from the previous presentation. LA County's Measure H, this was the example that we gave you in 2017 for homeless programs. And as you can see, about 3.5 million has been collected from Paramount since July of 2017, when the tax was enacted. To date, we've only received about $25,000 for a grant in return from that. We are still waiting, as I mentioned, we do have a second grant application, and that's for $150,000. And we, we're hoping that'll be coming soon. But current taxes, as, as you know, are largely being used to benefit homeless programs outside of Paramount. So let's take a look, this is pretty obvious here. This is a hypothetical example of what would happen if a sales tax measure passed. Let's just call it Paramount Measure XYZ. All new sales tax collected would stay in Paramount, and this would help keep tax revenue local. It would not go outside the city. So the blue bar is what would be collected, and the green bar, which is what would be used in Paramount. Jumping here. We also brought this back, but we expanded it to you, to show, expanded for you, to show you a bit more, and we also updated it. This is, once again, the sales tax rates for areas, cities. Paramount's not the only city having to resort to a sales tax measure. As you can see there, the, the City of Cerritos just voted a couple weeks ago to take it to the voters at their March 2020 election. Lakewood will be soon too, from what I understand, they will be going to their voters as well in March 2020. And they will also be presented to their council to go to the ballot next month as well. So you can see that this is definitely a trend, and I believe that Norwalk is doing this, the same thing. Bellflower has an election in November of 2020, so I'm not sure what they are planning just yet. There was some discussion at the last meeting about the survey that was done in spring and presented to the city council prior to that at your May meeting. So, just to recap, starting with a little bit of information about scientific surveys, it's a scientific method that includes random sampling and statistical analysis. Surveys are definitely a representative of a population within a statistical margin of error. In fact, surveys done on a national level, they gauge options quite frequently, and are often, often conducted from a sample of only 1,000 people, and that's for the entire United States. As I mentioned, our survey was conducted by FM3 back in May of 2019. They used a 392 total sample size, and 275 of those were likely voters in March of 2020. Excuse me. The margin of error for that sample was a 5.9%. And if you recall what we presented to you both last, at the last council meeting, as well as in May, that residents were overall pleased with the, the direction we're going. And in fact, 77% stated that they would support a potential sales tax measure. Take a sip of water real quick. So let's, just so that you can feel comfortable with the validity of these scientific surveys, we asked FM3 to provide us with some results from past surveys that they conducted, and how the survey results actually compared to the election result. So you can see here, yes, we did hire FM3 to do a poll for, in March of 2015, for our utility users' tax. The survey they conducted showed that 76% would support it. The election result, after all the, the votes were counted, was 75%. FM3 was hired by Metro to do the Measure M transportation tax in November 2016. The, the survey that they conducted showed that 71% of voters in LA County would support it. The result was 71.15%, so that's pretty close there. And lastly, the county also did a measure last year for Measure W, which was for storm water. And the survey showed that 71% would be in support, and the election result would, is right close behind at 69.5%. And Measure W, I might add, was a parcel tax, if you recall, so. So we also wanted to share with you some potential ballot language. You all have seen this, this was in the May 2019 presentation that was given to you, but I thought I'd bring it back to you. This was the language, once again, that the polling company tested in this, in the scientific poll. And it's pretty close to what voters could see in March 2020 election, should you approve this item at the next council meeting. So, if you could take a moment there to read it, there's quite a bit of words there, but it's essentially what a voter would see when they go into the ballot box or they're voting at home with that, so. Okay, and lastly, as I mentioned at the last council meeting, we are working with a consultant to educate the community on the city's financial condition and the possibility of a sales tax measure being placed on the March 2020 ballot. Here's just a, a draft of a mailer that would be going out soon. It also is going to be in Spanish, as was directed by the council. And it also will include a mailback survey on community priorities, something very similar that was conducted in the poll. And we're hoping this will go out in the next week or so. So in summary, residents, as I mentioned, have a, a positive outlook about our direction. Expenditures continue to outpace revenues. We do have a structural, a budget deficit, but that is no, it is no surprise we've been preparing the council for that. We have conducted a number of cost-saving measures over the years. We've looked for additional flexible revenues to continue providing optimal service. The potential sales tax measure, if approved by the voters, would raise it by three-quarters of a percent, and would bring four to six million dollars in new revenue to the general fund. Other agencies around us have increased the, the sales tax rate. And the big thing is that additional sales tax revenue, if generated, will stay local to benefit Paramount. A scientific survey was, of registered voters, was conducted in May 2019, and you see, and you can see the results there. And as I just mentioned, we will be conducting a community education outreach program that is currently underway. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. John, what's the urgency of putting this on the November 2020 ballot? I mean, not the November, the March 2020 ballot. The reason why I'm asking is because in March of 2017, when we had our last city council elections, we had Measure H, and we asked the residents of Paramount to come out of pocket. And then you addressed the homeless issue, and you said, you know, a lot of that money deals with homelessness in surrounding cities and not 26,000 or so here in Paramount. But you have to understand too, when other cities, and it's gone to other cities, by controlling that homeless issue, it doesn't trickle down into Paramount. Because if the surrounding cities aren't handling homeless, it's going to affect Paramount. So even though we only got 26,000, but it's going to surrounding cities, that homeless money is still helping Paramount, even though it's on the outside. My concern is asking the residents for another increase in taxes. We constantly get compared to Cerritos and Lakewood and Norwalk, where they're three times, if not larger than the city of Paramount. And their, the median income here in Paramount is 35,000 to 45,000. And when you talk about Cerritos, it's 100,000. When you talk about other cities, it's so much larger than Paramount. So I just, I just don't feel like that's a, a fair analysis when we continue to compare ourselves to cities like Cerritos. I'm not saying that the city shouldn't do the tax increase. At this point, I'm just not convinced it needs to happen in March of 2020. I think there's a lot of other issues, and I know you've talked about the specific, when you have a, when you put it on the ballot, and it's either general fund or, you know, for specific. When we talk about quality life issues, like the Yolanda that came in today to talk about filled space, and we talk about, Mr. Yan is always talking about his handball courts, and we talk about quality of life issues, when it's just placed into a general fund, and we've seen how some spending has not, you know, not everybody has agreed on some of the spending that's occurred recently, so that takes it into specific funding. But I guess my question is, when you live here in Paramount, there's some quality of life issues that need to be addressed. And if it hasn't been addressed in the past, and that's why we're dealing with these issues now, I think the community needs to be concerned with, if they come up with more money, how are we going to convince them that now it will go to the quality of life issues, like crime, like parks, like recreation, things that really affect the people here in Paramount? It's too, to me, it's too general to go back at the next election and ask for more money. So I guess my original question is, I, I don't know if we're rushing it, why couldn't it, think about it longer, go on the November ballot? Is somebody saying they're going to come in and, is the county going to come in and take it? I mean, that speculation, or is that fact? Or is it speculation? I mean, you, you raise a lot of good arguments, but I still have a lot of concerns about going back to the median income of people and saying, we need more, we need more, we need more.
Mm-hmm.
At this particular time.
I could definitely appreciate all, all of your concern for that, and that is definitely something that we do look at. Now, the urgency is the fact that we are facing a structural deficit. So, the longer we put off the pain, the deeper the pain gets. So, it's totally the council's decision. Our, our recommendation is to do it now. Yes, there is talk, and that's what it is right now, speculation, that other agencies could take it. But the question to you is, do you want to take that chance, that you wait, you put it off until then? Then it's too late. So, that's one thing you'll have to weigh in your decision if it does happen, so. And the, the, you know, there is, there is the urgency, because as I mentioned, we don't want the, the deficit to grow. Yes, we do have reserves, but I would not recommend those to be used right now, especially if this is a viable thing. The homelessness, I couldn't agree with you more. If we don't have other cities that participate aggressively in addressing this regional issue, then yeah, it does affect us. But the point with that, that we showed, is that we contribute quite a bit into that fund. And if it was, you know, we are getting a million back, or whatever it is, I can see where that argument would not be, be persuasive enough. But 25,000 and possibly another 150, that's low. But also to bolster your argument as well, the county does come, and they help with cleaning up of homeless encampments, so there is a benefit that we get directly from that. So there's no doubt we do get that. So, couldn't agree with you more on that. As far as comparing ourselves to others and why, the reason why we do compare that is because a lot of our residents do leave Paramount to shop. The statistics show that. They show that we have a lot of leakage. Leakage is when they, our sales tax is leaking out because it's going to other cities. So we did an economic development study, probably about four years ago, I want to say. And that showed that there's a lot of leakage that's going to Downey, it's going to Long Beach, and Southgate, especially with the Azalea Center opening up in Southgate. A lot of people are leaving town and they're going there to shop. So, if they're leaving town, they're already paying that. Not saying that, that that's a good thing or a bad thing, but the fact is, is they are leaving town, they are paying that already, that higher tax. So, the other reason to show other cities, it's to show you that there is a trend, that every, every city is doing, they're, they're recognizing that there is a revenue issue going on. We're not alone. That's, that's what the whole purpose of that is showing there. Now, the question about quality of life issues that need to be addressed, couldn't agree with you more there. That is why we're always trying to find ways to address quality of life, to enhance the, the life that people want to live here in Paramount. And that is showing it with our property values, people do want to come here. But we do things like switching up traffic enforcement. Although we have had the street racers, fully acknowledge that, our traffics, our traffic tickets are up. People complain about traffic at all the neighborhood watch meetings. We don't sit back and just take those complaints. We're actively trying to improve that, improve the quality of life. How do we convince residents? Well, in order for us to be fruitful in this, in this endeavor, yes, we do have to convince the residents, so. But it is their choice in the end. We can provide as much public information as we can about what we do and what the intention of this money is used for. For instance, 40% of the budget of the general fund goes to public safety, mostly to law enforcement. When I prepare future budgets, my intention is not to decrease that. I've heard it loud and clear that that is the council's priority. So, if the extra money does come in and it goes towards the budget, my expectation is that it would stay at the, the level that's always been budgeted, the majority going to that department.
So then my follow-up question is, so the tax, we're, we're hoping that will, that will pull us out of the deficit, three to four million. But what has been the other plan? We, we, we had foresight, we knew this was coming, and I know we went out, we went and we took some benefits away from the employees, which I, I didn't, I don't like solving the problem off the backs of the employees, but I understand it had to be done, or that was a general consensus. But my point is, okay, so now we just go to the residents and ask them for more money, but what about our development? Let's say, what's the other plan, besides just going after the residents? What has our development done? If we're losing to Downey, and we're losing people shopping in Lakewood, why aren't they shopping in Paramount? What have we done to stimulate the economy here as far as development? It just seems like we're behind on some things, and now we're asking the residents to solve the problem.
Absolutely. It does sound very frustrating. Economic development is definitely a challenge these days, especially without the redevelopment agency. We have created economic opportunities in our downtown. When you have a downtown the way we have now, it attracts people to come to, to, to your, your town. Yes, we don't have large swaths of land, like Downey has, to develop a humongous center where people can shop, or as I mentioned earlier, the Azalea Center in Southgate. We just don't have that land, that open land, at the moment. The swap meet is a potential for a future development there. That could happen. That's where a potential development could occur. But the scarcity of land in town is, is a, a real fact, and that's the challenge that we have. We do our best to attract as much economic development that we can, but is definitely, definitely a challenging thing. Now, keep in mind too, retail, the, the face of retail is totally changing. Internet purchases are, are, are putting out of business a lot of brick and, and mortar stores. So, you don't see the brick and mortar going up as much as we did, say, five years ago, 10 years ago. So, that's the other challenge. Do you want to track that and then they go out of business? So...
But what we do have is a Ross that is rundown, the parking lots are dirty, and I would rather go to another Ross. I mean, I do go to our Ross, just to give it the business. But what we do have, we need to make more attractive, and work on what we do have, and then work on bringing in things that people are interested in having. You know, we took away a mom-and-pop breakfast place, Rosewoods, you know, some years ago. And I get it all the time, people want to have a family-style restaurant, not a chain restaurant. They, they now leave here to go to Cerritos. And I just think we need to work more on development before we ask, or maybe at the same time. I just think we need to do a little bit better than just going after the residents, just going after the residents for more money.
Yeah, and we've belt-tied it all as much as we can, councilmember, as much as we can, to avoid sales tax. As I mentioned tonight and previously, this is a last resort. This is, we, we've done all we can to cut expenditures, we're lean and mean, we're under 100 employees, we've been that way. I've not proposed to add any new positions. I've not proposed to add any new positions. No, I've shifted, yes, there were vacancies and I moved people around, but any additional positions, so I've frozen too. I've done a lot of what we can before, because it is a giant step. Nobody wants to pay more taxes. Sales tax, let me keep in mind, it does not apply to groceries, it does not apply to baby food, it does not apply to rent, things of that nature that are optimal for living. It does apply to things like television sets, or TV sets, whatever you want to call it, computers, laptops, things of that nature. So, hard goods definitely are there. Clothes, obviously too as well, so, and some takeout. And yes, the Rosewood did leave, but we did do a community survey, I want to say about six years ago, and the community wanted an IHOP. That's definitely what they said.
I'm not saying not to bring in the IHOP. Don't get me, don't get it wrong. I'm just saying, we took away something that they really liked. I'm glad we have an IHOP here. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, a lot of the people that I speak to or have talked to me, miss that type of environment as opposed to a chain, that they'd have an option.
Gotcha.
So if I misled you on that one, that's not what I was trying to do. Thank you. Thank you for answering.
Yeah. You know, Lori, I agree with you on a lot of this stuff, but I, you know, as far as the Rosewood goes, you know, they were behind in their rent to us as long as we were leasing them when we took it over, so, I mean, they weren't setting a firm. But John, what is to stop the AQMD from getting this 3/4% on the ballot before we even, you know, if we don't do it this year? They're going to come back, they want more money.
They, yeah, they.
They're going to do it.
They do.
Or somebody else is going to do it.
Sure.
So we might as well do it before somebody else gets, get the 3/4% ourselves, rather than take a chance and wait and have somebody else get it. That's my opinion.
Question?
I'd just like to make a comment, Mr. Mayor, if I could. It's, economic development is a very difficult process to understand if you haven't been in the thick of it. As, as someone who used to, you know, sit back and say the same thing, "Why don't we have this restaurant? Why don't we have this shopping center? Why don't we have this car lot?" And then being put in the position of leadership and going out and trying to get those businesses, a lot of outside factors impact. It's not a matter of wanting, it's a matter of being able to get them to invest in your community. So the median income of our residents plays a part, the fact of how much open land that we have available plays a part, and that, the kind of restrictions that individual developers place on where they will put certain things. We really, really fought very hard to get the restaurants that we did get in town. As much as I myself loved Rosewood and loved Ramon, he wasn't making it in the city of Paramount. It was very difficult for him, as Councilmember Hofmeyer said, to do his rent. The revitalization of our downtown was, how many millions of dollars, John?
5.2.
5.2 million dollars to make an attractive scenic point for residents to come, to make the streets more crossable so that residents would visit the downtown. We had a tremendous partnership with Northgate Market, who's done an exceptional job, I think, in developing their side of the street. I know for years, we've tried to get the other side, Ross, that Councilmember Gann talked about. I totally agree with her about the state of affairs over there and how it looks, but it is a private business, it's also owned by a private company, and you have to get buy-in from them to want to develop, to want to change it. You just can't go in and take over somebody's property and do it. So I just want to be on the record of saying that economic development, especially without a redevelopment agency to offer incentives to business in a community where the income levels are low and where you have no open land to invest in is a very difficult thing. We may have some great opportunities down the road with the Metro Rail and the investment that they want to put into the economy around that center. But I can tell you that it's been an ongoing fight for many, many years. I remember the very first Starbucks that we got on the pond, the city manager actually cornered the developers for Starbucks on a plane and got on his knees and begged them to give Paramount a chance. And we do find that when they give Paramount a chance, they usually do very well. But we've have, had a lot to overcome, and it's been a lot of years coming to get where we are today, and we will do nothing but continue to move forward and try to get more investment in our city. Thank you.
Further comments or questions? None? Okay. Well, then, we're in, there's no vote on this, so we're into comments or committee reports. Council members, where did I start? We're down here this time.
Okey-dokey.
I think so.
All right, just a couple things. Attended a neighborhood watch on Fairlock and Jefferson, which was well-attended, and the community really appreciate, appreciated public safety coming out. And then recently, I attended a conference, and a large portion of it was about the census and how important to participate in the census, because in order to get more money into our community, everyone has to be counted. And so, just, just to encourage everybody to participate in the census. And then, an eco-rapid transit meeting, which Metro will be holding more community outreach, like they did in Paramount and other cities. If anybody is interested, you can look that up to see where those outreach and answers to MetroLink questions. And then Eleanor mentioned, I did a fundraiser, and I, and I just want to thank the city of Paramount. Dave and Yesenia helped me put a nice tin together with t-shirts and other items, and then the ladies from Latina's Art Foundation also added some t-shirts, and we were able to collect some money to send to fellow people from Paramount that have roots here in Paramount. And I did mention that those were donated from the city and it came from all of us. And Brenda did participate, because I strong-armed her, so you can count that.
And it hurt.
Into donating. So, without more being said on the things that I did, there are a couple questions that I do have, and I'd like some follow-up. Weber metals, there's an article, I guess, in the Paramount Journal about Weber metals, and they're not able to be in compliance with the 1430 rules. And I'm concerned, they were given reasonable amount of time to take their grinding inside to be in compliance with the regulations. And I'd like a reason why they're not in compliance and why they couldn't meet that deadline to taking grinding inside when we have two schools across the street. I think that's pretty important. And then, of the, speaking on metal companies, I know October was the deadline for the 17 or 19 metal companies to become, to get in compliance, and I think there were 11 companies that still were not in compliance. And I'd like to find out what we've done, what we plan on doing to get them in compliance. And, I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Mayor, if I can respond to a couple of Councilmember Gann's issues. The Weber metals issues, yes, we did discover that yesterday in the article that Councilmember Gann mentioned. And they do have total enclosures, from what AQMD has told us, and they entered a stipulated order for abatement to enhance those enclosures, to bring them up to Rule 1430. And they asked for the extended time because they were moving some of their facilities from their Paramount side to their Long Beach side. They installed some of the equipment, it didn't work, is what AQMD was telling us. So, they are now going, before the AQMD hearing board, to request more time so that they can invest in it. But in the meantime, we're told by AQMD that the order for abatement does require them to have specific emission control measures and housekeeping measures to keep the emission levels down. Now, my next question to AQMD was, are they following those measures? Have they been keeping up with the housekeeping stuff since March of 2019? The response that I got from AQMD was, yes, in fact, they have been. They've had inspectors out there all the time, they tell me, and they have been keeping with that. So that has been doing. In regards to the companies that were not in compliance, actually, the number is five. And I believe, Adriana, did you send, code enforcement letters did go out, or are going out very soon here?
John, we assigned a code enforcement officer. She did go out there to all the sites to make sure that they're still in business. And then we've been in communication with planning, and John Carver has given us the list of all the violations, and we'll be putting those letters out, and they will be receiving those. We just wanted to make them very detailed, but an officer has been assigned to all the cases.
And John, we just received another application yesterday, so we're.
Oh, good. So that makes it four, then?
Three are left.
Oh, three are left, okay.
Perfect, thank you.
So it's improving, then, okay.
So really quickly, I was actually able to attend the State of the, State of the State Address that was actually hosted in the city of Lakewood. They were, Speaker Anthony Rendon was actually the guest speaker, and actually what he spoke about was basically what's happening in Sacramento, and how is he bringing it down to the local level? A lot of his conversation had to do around education. How do we get our, our kids educated? What do we do? How do we focus to get them involved, or just to listen to a teacher? So, he brought up some really good points, and I'm hoping that we can get some of that, that we can bring back and share with the school board, because they brought up some really good tips. The only question I had is, I know in the memo, it stated that there was going to be a trial area, or we're going to do some of the cleanup on some of the street racing. Do we have an update on that?
I'll turn it over to Public Works Director.
Thank you.
Challenging time, that's what we're.
Sorry, Councilmember Olmos, yes, we've tried it. We tried it actually for, gosh, maybe six hours of the day, to try to remove it, and it just did not work.
Wow.
We're still searching for other options, but as of today, we have not been able to be very successful in removing it.
Have we reached out to, like, Belflar or Lakewood since they have the same issue?
Oh, yes. They also have the same issue we have.
Probably go all over the entire state, probably the country, and you're going to have the same issue. I've seen it in Arizona, all over the place.
Well, then, let's not do anything about it. It's happening everywhere.
Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Yeah, last week, I had a chance to go down with John and Kevin. We went down to the JPI Conference down in Palm Springs, and we're talking about risk management and what we can do in our cities to lower the cost of our insurance. And I went to the Friday night market here again and got my usual bag of kettle corn, and then I went to the Paramount football game last week. And I tell you, if any of you are football fans out here and you want to see a great high school football team, go to Warren Stadium next Friday night and watch Paramount and Warren. They'll be playing for the San Gabriel Valley Championship, more or less, and I guarantee you, you'll see a great game. Paramount's got a great group of people out there, and it's amazing how many people were at Downey's last week, and it was kind of a slaughter from Paramount last week, but I think this game would be different, but Paramount's got good support for their football team, and I think we should all be proud of that.
We are, that's great.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
First of all, I wanted to comment on something that I read in one of our memos, specifically regarding the deputies in Paramount. And Lieutenant Ilo, I just wanted to say, it was, made me so happy to read that deputies were deferring promotions and waiting for promotions to happen because it would transfer them out of the city of Paramount, and they wanted to stay here, so they would wait till they could be promoted in the city of Paramount. Been around long enough that I remember when they were on waiting lists to get out of Paramount. You know, they didn't want to work here, and they couldn't wait to leave the city. So to see this change, and to know that we're doing the right things to support our deputies, and to, that they're so invested in the city of Paramount and doing such a great job that they're even deferring promotions, I thought, was a terrific statement on our community. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Also, I attended our monthly ad hoc meeting, and during that, David Johnson gave us updates on some upcoming events. One really exciting one is the Veterans Ball that we're going to be having over at the park at the gym, is that where the location is? Yeah, at Paramount Park at the gym. So, we're going to be honoring all of our Paramount veterans with a very nice sit-down dinner, and they can bring guests with them, and that's really exciting. And we have our Halloween carnival coming up that will have Mogda's famous haunted house, which, unless you can take terror, don't bother to go in it, it's a pretty scary event. We also saw the new promotional materials for the STAR program, the after-school care program for our children, and we hope that more parents will take advantage of the after-school homework help and nutrition programs that they have there. We also had some discussions with the school district about some shared use of the property for some adult sports programs that we'd like to start, so we're working on that with them. And we had an update from the superintendent regarding the fight that broke out over at the campus, and it was actually very good information directly from the superintendent, because originally, the information that came out was it was about 200 kids, actually it was only 20 kids. And I guess all the videos that they reviewed showed that the police officers, the on-campus officers, as well as all of the administration, teachers and stuff, were there instantaneously. And there was actually no physical fight among the kids over social media. There was a physical fight that took place in the back of the campus between two boys over a totally different issue. So they met with the Sheriff's Department on how to handle some of these things in the future so that it doesn't get the kind of blown out of.
Proportion.
Thank you. Blown out of proportion that it did, because that's not really happened. And so, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Last week, I did receive a report on the mosquitoes, and through September, they're about, on about five-year average, actually, as far as things are concerned. The statewide, they have had 112 human cases of West Nile virus have been reported. Requests for service through September has gone up about 33% from last year. They had requests of 2,117 calls for service for spray, so on and so forth. Actually, we had 10 here that were reported in Paramount. So they're still around a little bit, the mosquitoes, so you want to watch out for those. A little bit more on the football team. If Press Telegram's correct, the quarterback that they have right now, his career in high school, passing is a little over 4,100 yards that he's completed, and very few interceptions. So they're doing pretty well. We go to the games, I've been going to them for, since I went to school there. Also, this afternoon, we had the ribbon-cutting for the STAR after-school program for the garden that they have, and Becca Gillan, I don't see her out here, she arranged to get all the soil, so on and so forth, donated, and I think a lot of the plants, too, was it not? The kids were really excited to have this thing. I had to high-five about 50 of them, I think. But they were good, they were ready to really learn about gardening and so on and so forth. That's about all I have. Staff?
Yes, sir. I wanted to mention that we will be doing a survey of the community for adult sports, what the interest is, and we will be gauging that. We have been doing a walk-up type of survey at a few of our events, and we'll continue to do that, in fact, at the Halloween carnival. So if any of you out there are at the Halloween carnival and you see a staff member coming up, do you please take the survey? I wanted to turn it over to our Community Service and Recreation Director, Dave Johnson, to kind of tell you how so far it's going. We don't have a lot of numbers yet, we're hoping that in the next month or two, we'll have more.
Thank you, John. As John mentioned, we're trying to reach out, we're using, you know, Survey Monkey, which allows our staff to go out among, at these various events with like a tablet, and we're able to approach folks, and they can fill out the survey quickly on that tablet. So, through the two Friday night markets, we did one in September, one in October, we surveyed 174 folks. Of those, 57% were residents, because we did them at the night market, so that's actually a positive thing that we're drawing in non-residents to our market. About 59% of those folks were interested in adult sports. About 34% were aware that we do have an adult sports program called the Paramount Cup. And of the adult sports that we asked them to identify, they could choose multiple sports, about 19% were interested in footsall, 33% were interested in soccer, 29% in slow-pit softball, 28% in flag football, 20% in handball, 23% in dodgeball. And then, we only did it on the last survey, but we had about 52% folks, adult folks, say they wanted to play basketball in an adult basketball league. So, that's the summary of what we have right now. As John mentioned, we'll do it at our Halloween carnival. We're working with our Public Information Officer to try to broaden this into a online survey that we can get to a larger part of our population. So hopefully, a few months down the road, we'll have a better picture of what they're looking for.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, let's finish with the staff first.
Okay. Yes, sir. Now I have two new introductions to give to you of two full-time staff members. Can I have our new Community Service Officer stand up? Kayla Curly? There's Kayla. Kayla joins us as a, as a. Kayla joins us, as I mentioned, as our new Community Service Officer. She was originally from Illinois, and then she moved to Southern California to pursue a career in law enforcement. She holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and psychology from Illinois State University, and after graduating college, she moved to Southern California for a chance at warmer weather, she said. Illinois is pretty cold, probably. She's worked as a Community Service Officer for the City of Commerce and also for Cal State Long Beach. She enjoys hiking, traveling, exercising, and also spending time with her adopted dog, Lucky. So welcome, Kayla. Welcome to the team. Also, we have a new planner in our planning department, Ms. Reyna Scheitzel. Ms. Reyna Scheitzel, she was born, she was born in Whittier, raison d'habre, and she currently lives in Buena Park. She went to UC Berkeley and graduated with an undergraduate degree, and she got her master's at Utah State University. She was recently with the city of La Puente as a planner there for six and a half years, and she loves family reunions, ping pong, dancing cats, and world travel. So welcome aboard with our team. And then we have a couple birthdays up here on the dais. Last week was Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer's birthday, and today is Councilmember Lemon's birthday. So on behalf of the staff, happy birthday to you, too.
Happy birthday.
Sixty-five.
Good. Okay, you had something else?
I have one more question, John. What's going on at Starbucks across the street? Anything?
We're hoping some. We, Starbucks still has a lease.
Lease, yeah.
They're still leasing that, that suite, which is kind of highly unusual, that they're paying rent here and then they have the other spot. We have been talking to Jimmy John's, which is a sandwich shop, kind of like a Subway, where you order it that way. They seem interested in it. We're doing all we can to step in and, and help to get a good tenant in there, a viable tenant, as Councilmember Lemon's mentioned, the investment that we made in our downtown, so we're doing all what we can to do that, so.
Yeah, good. That's it. I might add one thing that they didn't think of adding when I was talking about the quarterbacks for high school. He's very good, but he also has very good receivers that have a tendency to get wide-open on some really long passes, so it's just, it's the whole team that's very good, not just the quarterback, but he is very good. Okay, we have a closed session. Item conference with legal counsel anticipated, litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuit, paragraph two of subsection D of section 54956.91, potential case. And we're going to recess this meeting until after closed session, correct? Okay, no, this is, we are in recess.
Mr. Mayor, the city council did conduct a duly authorized closed session, and at that time after discussion, there is no reportable action to be taken, and that concludes the presentation.
Okay, and the next meeting is adjourned to our regular meeting November 5th at 6:00.